Good evening, the time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call as a board of select meeting to order for December 23rd and ask you to please rise to a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the law, to the Constitution, and to the Constitution of America. Thank you. Would you want to call?
Mark Egging.
Kevin Cunningham.
Thank you, Lori.
Item C to approve the meeting minutes from the Board of Select meeting from 12/9/2024.
Make motion to approve the meeting minutes from 12/9/2024.
And outside of that?
You have the discussion. Hearing none, all in there say aye.
Aye.
Item D is public comment. Everybody here wishes to speak tonight? We have a party, but I'm not sure if the microphone's working or not, so...
That's a good thing. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening. Happy Halloween, difficult. I came tonight because I have something on my mind that's been on my mind for a while and I'm wanting to think about it.
If you don't mind just one, just for the record, so we can get to the secretary of your name and...
Paul Sweet, 260 New Road, Musa.
Thank you.
My mailing address. Again, something on my mind that I've been thinking about and this is probably the place to talk about it, so at least I can give you my opinion on how I think. I think the town may have a big opportunity right now. The more I think about it, the more, at least, the least thing that we should do is conduct feasibility study. And that's on the old grammar school on Route 12. The more I thought about it, the more I said I needed to bring it before the town people, officials. That building, quite frankly, back in the late 90s, when the windows were all gone and the building vandalized and all these things, we were able to take advantage of a statue that paid 75 cents on the dollar, the town play field, to put that building back online. If memory serves me correct, we were paying a quarter on the dollar and that's why we remembered, like, I think we outshared, we got a million dollars into that 3 million dollar fraud. And not only, I was leaving public life at that time, but we got it all passed and approved. And while it had been gone for a while, they decided to add the third floor and redo the third floor. So now you've got a completely refurbished building, a saleable building, a building that's usable. Prior to that, handicap updates on the building were done, but the whole building rehabilitated. And it's been an outstanding building for years, but the schools have been there. The town hall, they're here obviously a little over 100 years, and I really could look at the building and say, we're running out of space. You really don't have a place to add on to this building without disturbing the historical nature, if you will. You can't add rooms to the swimming pool, you can't really cut this building, this room here into offices or the lobby without taking away from the natural historical significance of this facility. I was here for many years, as you know, and space has always been a problem, always. I recognize that the school building, the grammar school, might need a new heating system, it may need, may need a new roof. I don't know anything. I didn't conduct a feasibility study. But I do know this much, that you have an opportunity here right now, maybe to do something really, something that's really going to benefit the future. You're going to have more square footage. You couldn't build that building today for $10 million. The infrastructure of that building is so well put together, I'm talking bricks and mortar here, and a building that goes nowhere and has plenty of space with elevator in. Somewhere down the line, no matter what we do here, addition, if you're thinking, boom, we're on somewhere that's going to make it look like it fits, space for park, we're already putting buildings out there to put things in and end it. I think that, the more I think about it, that you're going to gain, if you do a feasibility study, something that's independent from, I'm not saying that somebody here local in town can't do it, I don't want to exclude anybody local, but take an outside company that can look at this building, look at that building, and present something to the community, the taxpayer, that makes sense. I recognize that this is a fixed asset of the town, that building up there is a fixed asset of the town, it's part of our worth, it's audited, it's part of a fixed asset of what the town value is every year. If you had to build a new town hall in today's day and age, you've got to buy land. I had to buy land twice for two schools, a million and a half dollars. Where are you going to find the land you need today at that kind of price? I understand that some opportunity, and maybe the administration has some ideas about this. There are people that will pay you a million and a half dollars for that building. You can't replace that building for a million and a half dollars. And somewhere down the line, not too far down the line, guys, you're going to need space. And without looking at that, and I don't want to rain anybody parade, I haven't heard what you're all thinking, what anybody thinks, but I know what I'm thinking. Now, if you try to sell that building, talk on the ground, it's simply this, it's not going to, it's not going to pass. It won't pass. There's nothing political about it. Bottom line is, it's a facility that needs to be looked at, similar to what happened over at Sterling. Because they had a real small town hall and that school opened up for them, the smartest thing they ever did was to move everything into that town hall. Senior Center, all that stuff went in. That's a different story for another night. But here, again, feasibility study in hand, but you've got plenty of civic and nonprofit organizations, you've got a recreation department, you've got things that just come to mind that you could fix some problems for generations. You'll say, you, you, this could become a building, you're not going to get any tax dollars for it, we never have and we never will, why would you just let other county agencies possibly come here, get the town hall, let them move up there? You're going to need a wall, so you're going to have to prepare people, spend some money, but you're not going to spend $10 million, okay? So 1.5, $2 million is not a lot of money in today's market, when you start talking to real estate and buildings. So I need to talk to you tonight about this, and, because I want you to, I want you to consider, it may not work, but you could fix a problem for the next 100 years. There's certainly accessibility issue. Rent on Route 12, there are parking, there are elevators, it's handicap accessible, the building is saleable, it's a good building, it's strong. Don't lose the opportunity, that's all I'm saying. Take the, take the opportunity and make sure we're not doing something that's going to come back 10 years from now, where they say, wow, we should have, we should have, we should have looked at this a little more so. That's all I'm going to say, all right? And that's, thank you for your time, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Kevin Cunningham, 1221 North Road. I just want to say, I've had multiple phone calls come in from me for a few reasons, because they think I've come up with this, a lot of this, and, so piggyback off what Paul said. The feedback on building being sold is just not good. I think we've got to look into this a little bit differently. All you ask is that you give it any opportunity, so, something that we can try to get, maybe, maybe the town people, maybe have a town meeting or something and ask some people express their feelings on it. If it's not feasible, show them the number, if you know, if one of those things, number makes sense. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The microphone doesn't work, so I'll just stand here and talk. I'm Karen Row, and I live at 219 Square Rock Road. I wanted to echo what both Paul and Joe have stated here, but just to add some, some information, Plutnam had an issue and they needed to rebuild their town hall and it cost them almost $20 million. And I think selling this building now is very, very short sighted when, as Paul had stated, we are very soon going to need a bigger facility in order to house what we need here in town. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration. I know the building is listed right now on Realtor.com and I would just, I feel that listing should be taken down until the townspeople have an opportunity to weigh in on what should be done with that building.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, you just got to make sure you give her her name too. Oh, my name is Sean Olson, 16 School Street, Central Building. Yeah, it's currently listed for $1.9 million in Zillow too, so I was kind of surprised to see that since I brought this town property and see how it could be listed for sale, since we hadn't had any discussion. And I'm new to the town, I've only been here a few years, but I saw that building as, again, as an opportunity, because we have a community center that's pretty, pretty small as well. And there's a long way to get to use of that facility, and if you have one thing going on there, you can't have another. And this building is a great historic building, and it needs some maintenance as well. So it hurt me, you know, you've got this 27 square foot building and it's kind of like, brainstorming some ideas to look at what we have for a town hall, what we have for that existing structure that's not vacant, and what we have for the community center. I think it could be a win-win for everybody to do something with it, so, just like that was what I said, and hope we can have an opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you. Pretty much, they kind of said what I was going to say about the whole property on Route 12, but I'll just keep it short, because pretty much saying the same thing, just I think we need to start the discussion regarding the town hall and how we're outgrowing the building and what the town wants to do in the future. Like, I'm one of those departments that is outgrowing where I am, and I don't even have capital money in my office, because I don't have the room capacity, or the flooring will not hold the files that I need in my office. So the employees did have a meeting with the Board of Select regarding this, but I also wanted to, you know, let the others select and know about what's going on. Like I said, senior departments don't have enough room for staff and are limited in space for storage. Right now, we have the opportunity possibly to move to the ECC, like you said, feasibility study. It's very location and it's definitely more space than the current town hall. So we should definitely look into that, even if it costs pretty big. Like Karen said, the ability to town hall, platinum is expensive. Another option was to maybe have this place expanded, we possibly could, I'm douching, right away, just to have a more professional atmosphere. You know, that may be something that the town employees want to be able to take. I mean, is it acceptable, is that, you don't have certain rooms, and it's current time, it's indebted pool, so that's, that's not good. So I just believe that we need to have this discussion, the town, all town employees, with Board of Select and whoever, so we hold all our concerns, what we need and we don't need, and we just, we want to talk, we want to, you know, clearly stand as employees, because some of us, we're going to be here for years, and some people aren't, and some people are. And we just want to have a good working place. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Scott Allen, if I still have Rose Musa. I'm not really the dissenting vote, I agree with everything that everybody's said here, but the one thing that people have to keep in mind is, and you've got to really, three is going to be to lay this up. What is it going to cost us? What's it going to cost us to take the town hall, to move it over there, take the rec center, move it over here, what are the repairs that have to be done over there? It's not moving ready, Paul. I've been in there enough times, I've been bored of it. There's flooring in there that all needs to be replaced, although the, I don't know about the roof, I don't know about the heating system or any of that, but it's definitely not moving ready, there's work that has to be done there. So I think those are the things, the three you have to come up with. You have to give the town people the choice on what's it going to cost. Kevin, we've talked about this a million times, I've talked to the Department of the Board of Finance, Pete Shaw, you're not going to pass a budget that says anything above zero. People can't afford it. So now we're talking about trying to move the town hall over there, move the rec center over here, what, half a million, 1 million, 2 million? What is it going to cost? Where is that money going to come from? Are you going to get a grant for that? Is the state going to cover it? Those are all the things that have to be laid out. I know you're going to look at it and make good decisions with the threes, but that's just my opinion. Just remember, you can't just say we've got to move, because we're not going to give up $2 million, as I can tell you, the taxpayers, the market don't allow that to happen. So that's the things you've got to look at.
Anybody else?
Sean Peterson. I agree pretty much with everybody saying, I think feasibility study should be done on that building, if, see if it's feasible, put some numbers together, what's it going to cost to go up there. See if this building is feasible to relocate the recreation department here and see what the story is with that building. Maybe we sell that building and move somewhere else, the recreation building. Because the historical site belongs in this building, not an old funeral hall. The senior center belongs in a building like this, not a funeral hall. My comments.
Hi, Sam Garrett-Gall, 47 Highland Street in Musa. I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I, I think, I've asked this of every single thing that comes up and comes up here. I want a balance sheet of like the cost versus the reward. I've asked for this several times, and I think it, I've, I've talked about the different uses for all of the buildings, I've, I've talked about this. I think that this should have been done before we voted on it, to put it out for bid for a Realtor. I was here at the meeting where we voted to have, like, to go post an ad for a Realtor, and then it was surprising to me the next day when I got my turnpike buyer, that happened on a Monday, and then we got my turnpike buyer on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, and the ad was already in there, but I know from previous experience that those have to be by the Thursday before. So it's, I think, again, we need a little bit of, a little more transparency at the beginning of these. I have created different guides for other people about the cost and the benefit, and then there's feelings, and I get the feelings, and there's historic stuff, and there's, there's all of this. All I'm asking for is cost-benefit analysis from, from a standpoint of those who are making the decision to even bring this to a vote. Because yes, we, we as townspeople can make, can vote based on our feelings and based on the numbers that we think in our head, but until we see those on paper, there's no way we can make a, a, a good decision, or a decision that is, is good for the town, good for us, as individuals. So not only, and Joe put this nicely, is like, just show us the, the numbers and see if it makes sense, but I don't want it, if they don't, if only if they don't make sense. I want to know if they do make sense. I want them before it even comes to a vote for, for any action on it. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jenny Kipsekovich, 265 Gendron Road. I will not belabor any of the points already said. What I will say is there is not one person qualified in this room to determine whether or not that building should be put for sale. So to echo, we need to have someone outside of our community, whether it's a business in our town, to do a study on that. We did a study on our school system to determine if we had enough room for them. Why aren't we doing it when we're talking about a building that is on the market for almost $10 million, that could potentially have another use and serve our community well for many years to come?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kelly Roberts, 233 Hall Road. Reiterating what everybody's saying, my only thought was, once the cost analysis is done, I know those are concerned that people don't want to put the money out, or they don't want to sell something, or they do want to sell something. Put it in layman's terms, this is what it's going to cost to fix the building, and it's probably going to be upwards of 4 million, easily, to fix it and move everything and transfer from one building here and one building over there. But again, as you had said, sell the other building to recoup some of that money, but put it as a vote. We can spend 4 million now, or we're looking potentially, and in that study, have them find out, how long is it going to last in here for the town hall? Is it going to be five years? Or are it five, 10 years, we're going to be spending 30 million for a new building, because the costs of everything keeps rising? And that's the problem. I, as a taxpayer, don't want to put more money out, but I'd rather spend 4 million now than 20 million like Plutnam. I'd rather do that right now than five years from now put out 20 million, because everything's going to go up and we still can't afford it. And that's just my opinion. But if it's in a vote like that, it's easier for people to digest. Just a thought.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Kevin, I just follow with one more. Feasibility study, you can also do a fiscal analysis at the same time with the feasibility study, with different scenarios, okay? Jenny raised a good point. We shut the school down real quick and we consolidated people there, I guess that's working out, I don't know, it's not my fault. There's a little discussion about all the buildings, so there's, obviously, somebody's got some plan, okay? But, and that's fine, people, you need a plan, you've got to be looking ahead all the time, okay? But it's, you guys are pretty, how do I say? People need, not that you're hiding anything, but they need transparency to see what, where we're going with these assets, okay? We just can't sell something and then take the money and vote, do something with the money, and, and not consider what we have, okay? So that's all I'm saying, is a feasibility study would also come, the cost analysis, with different scenarios that you might be looking at. Meanwhile, that scenario of, are you going to need the school building back at some point? I don't know, I, I don't know. I just don't want to see us sell something that we got back online so reasonable, when we got a building that's getting full, and, and we all know that. And, you know what I'm saying? Enough said. Good night, and take care of yourself.
Paul, before you leave. Paul, before you leave. Before you leave. Before you leave. Just wanted to see, is there anybody else that wishes to speak at this time? I appreciate the...
I'm sorry, Kevin, I think I just wanted to add one more thing. For those that don't know, on the judge of the probate court, which is downstairs, we are tenants downstairs, and we have had issues, it's more than just outgrowing town hall. There's a lot of issues here with town hall when it comes to the workers that are here. I know my clerks, my three clerks down there, and they use space heaters, because we don't have heat downstairs. We had an HVAC guy show up on Friday when the court was closed, nobody told me about, it's very interesting that it happened on Friday, showed up this past Friday and kind of mapped out areas where we might be able to get some heat after six years, so it's nice that we're going to get that addressed. We have, when we came in here, we had studs in the wall, we had no sheetrock on the bottom because of the flooding down there. The flooding has not stopped, we were able to put up the sheetrock, we cannot put up any floor molding, and we cannot put any carpets in the hearing room. So there's a great deal of echo that goes on in that room, and we have to record hearings. So it's a lot more than just outgrowing this building, I can only speak for the probate court, it's a lot more than just outgrowing the building, it's the fact that there's a lot of renovations that have to be done here that have not been addressed in several years. So I just think that needs to be taken into consideration as far as the people, as you were saying, who actually work in the building and have to work in these conditions. So I'm appreciative of the guy coming to, to do the HVAC today, I appreciate that. Would have been nice if I knew about it, thankfully I was here.
Any other comments? Just so you understand, public comment is meant for you to give input, we appreciate that very much. It's not meant to be us answering and debating back and forth. I will say that I think we can consider having a public informational meeting on this, so we can get all the data available for everybody, so that we can then properly understand where we, what we stand and what we should be doing. So I will look into doing that. Just so you know, Paul, you started off by saying you're looking for a feasibility study. The Board of Education did a feasibility study, I have a copy of that, which I will bring to that meeting, to understand what the impact is for the entire building, cost estimates for fixing things up, and then going from there. So we are working on the issues, and I do, I think the Board of...
Is that study available?
Yes. Yep. Board of Education's had it for...
Nothing against the Board of Education, but Board of Education, like frankly, don't understand the structures, unless they've got a couple people on the board that are competent and, and trained and stuff like that.
Independent study was done, and I will share that with people. I'll also let you know that currently at this point, I'm looking at, I had to hire Mystic Air to go up to the building, they will be giving us an answer on if this has mold, if it has asbestos or lead, because that should have been done as a study on the way out, to let the town know where we stood, so I'm doing that right now.
What about the mold and stuff here, in this town hall?
First of all, the tech, I'm not going to go back and forth with the base...
No, just ask me.
But the testing was done on the building before and during construction in the area downstairs, it has no mold in the area. So what we're looking to do, we put those scrubbers in there to clean it up, make it so that you don't continue to do that, you can't have cold air and mold at the same time. I was, I had served growing here and verifying that, I had Mystic Air doing the testing, so that it's not, we're trying to eliminate any future issues. So that's being addressed, we have a plan to fill in that entire shooting range downstairs, fill it all in, and that would eliminate any other issues concerned with water coming in. We're also looking to do the heating system downstairs, so in both areas, we're on the probate side and also on the E&amp;Z side.
The middle cost, all of that?
Asking any cost, I can, you have to wait for the numbers to...
No, I know, I'm just saying, is that being worked on?
Well, the grant you cover, we look either at grant or the money's from ARPA, and we'll see that later on our beat, to finish to cover the cost. So that'll take care of that. The rest of it, I will talk about that afterwards.
I'll be very surprised, Mr. Beeks, at that point, then he led the best of our mold front. Now, again, last one I said mold, I don't, I have no idea what they've been doing up here for the last 15, 20 years. But that's something that might exist, but again, something you have to...
You have to do it, so you can, you know, whoever goes up there, whatever it might be, at least you know what's going on.
Well, also, the school system did a, I spent $50,000 to look at everything the school holds, every, every square inch, every space, and...
That building?
Yeah, all buildings.
All the buildings, all school-related buildings, every one of our schools, that ECC, everything. They spent $50,000 to do that. And it tells us exactly, every square inch of every piece in our school system, where it is, what, you know, what square footage of each room is, everything, am I right, Jenny?
Should be on their website, if not, I have copies. Okay, it tells you the age, and just to give an example of what we're looking at, it tells you the age of the roof and when it should be replaced next. It tells you that there's an issue with the boiler, how much it costs to fix it or to replace. So all this other information is in there.
It's very detailed. When was that done?
Last year with the Board of Education.
Because remember, if you're going to spend some money, you probably need to spend some money. The fact that nobody's walking out of here thinking, just move up there tomorrow, you've got to spend some money. If you're not building that building, the money that you have to replace it.
Yep, and, and just to reiterate what I mentioned before, there's more than factors here than just what it was it cost to move up to that building, you know, there's other factors, as what's left in your fund balance, what is the patient from other entities like the Board of Education to utilize some of that money from the fund balance. We're looking to go to bond out there in the future for HVAC repairs for three buildings for the schools. You're looking at also, if they're looking, by the way, just to fill it up, the Board of Education has given us information for the last 14, 15 years, enrollment's dropped every single year. So what we're looking to do at this point is possibly building five classrooms for Shepherd Hill, and then eventually closing out Musa, Musa School, as eventual plans. So there's a lot of factors that are in play here, and I will definitely bring this up to a meeting for the public to understand and digest.
Whatever you put in play, you put in play, but I'm just saying to you, I came tonight to make sure, or to put this in front of you, and I'm not talking about a acre in, in front of you.
Yep.
And I, I'm not, listen, your debt service, look, nobody creates the debt service more than I did when it came to building schools and IPOCs and all, your debt service to crash it down, your debt per capita in this town is just about recognizable, that's how low it is, okay? So you've got plenty of room, nobody's going to say, go to the fund balance, take money, you're obviously going to have to pull a bond to pay for whatever you decide to do, all right? Okay, I, I understand that, but you've got room for that. You retired a lot of debt, but we all have.
Another year and we're paying off. One more year and we're paying off.
There we go, okay? You have to start somewhere.
Okay, but there's also the issue that the Board of Education is looking to renovate the Memorial School, Central School, and Shepherd Hill to upgrade their HVAC, which hasn't been upgraded for over 20 plus years.
10 years ago, 10 years ago, told it was run a gas line, okay, cross-country, so you could have another option besides electricity. We didn't do nothing, nobody, everybody, everything was fixed, passed work, whatever you do, you do. I didn't make those calls, okay? Not my fault. I'm just telling you, I just want you to look at the building before you sell it, okay? And, and, because you can't build a building like that today, you're going to spend some real money.
I hear you, and I appreciate it.
Am I correct that we can't sell it without the public's...
Town meeting.
Without, well, town meeting, right? It can't be sold. The building can't be sold without a town meeting and vote.
I know that. I understand all that. That you can't spend money unless you have permission, have the money. So that is the issue about it. You know what I'm trying to tell you? I don't want to have to be, I want to-
Alright. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. I just thought one thing. I'm not gonna say that this is what's happening. Remember, it's bad business to balance budgets of selling our, our assets. Again, we'll try to have a meeting to inform the public of what's going on, all of it.
Until such time, is the listing gonna be taken down or is it still gonna be up there for sale?
Right now, I have to wait. I'm not, again, I'm not gonna debate the issues.
It's not a debate. It's a question.
What? I'm not gonna go back and forth with what's going on and what was happening. Right now, I have to wait for the study to be done for mold and, and lead and asbestos. Won't go anywhere until that even starts.
Didn't the Board of Administration employees just leave that building recently?
Yes.
So does it say too soon there was no lead?
Again, I'm not gonna debate. I'm gonna wait for the results to come in and then we'll go from there.
So the listing is gonna stay up there?
Correct. Alright. One. New business. Item F1, Consider Act on Tax Refunds for Tax Collection of 169.87, Ally Financial, 125.40, Jennifer L. Pizano, 44.47.
I'd motion to approve the tax refund on this at one hundred sixty-nine dollars, eight, seven cents.
Tell seconded.
Any other discussion? If you're not all in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item two, Discuss an Act on Proclamation for Teacher of the Year for 2024. Something that we, I got caught off guard with. They had a, an event for a teacher of the year between five towns. I was asked, how do you put something together, a proclamation, anything like that? Didn't get that, really didn't get that answer. So I reached out to both the principal of this teacher and also the teacher, Shayna Malone. I put together a quick proclamation. I wanted to thank, first of all, thank the teachers for all the work they're doing, administrators as well. It's, it's a tough, it's a tough world we live in now. I really do respect the work that's being done in the school system. I wanted to say thank you. It's a small gesture, but I do wanna say thank you to Shayna. If you wouldn't mind, if you could accept this, this is a, proclamation for teacher of the year for Plainfield for Shayna Malone. Whereas Shayna Malone's been a dedicated Plainfield teacher since 2008. She began her career in Musa Elementary School. And whereas she has been a reading specialist for Plainfield Public Schools since 2013 and transitioned to instructional coach, reading specialist in Plainfield Memorial in 2018. Whereas she's been a influential part of Plainfield's continued growth and reading achievement. And someone who's helped launch our new reading program, she sits on the Plainfield Memorial Leadership Team as well as leading the MTT, MTSS and data team. You'll explain that to me later. Mrs. Malone is an active member of the District Literacy Committee and is a leader of, with Hill for Literacy and literacy how professional development in the district. And whereas she has led professional development in the district for new and veteran teachers around Plainfield's new reading program and how best to utilize the data to inform instructional practices. Whereas Mrs. Malone graduated from CCSU with a BES in marketing. She earned her educational degrees from Sacred Heart, masters in educational, I'm sorry, elementary education, and SC, SU remedial reading and education leadership certification. And the event resolved Kevin cutting up first electmen of town of Plainfield and the full board selectmen hereby recommends Shayna Malone for, or commends Shayna Malone for her dedication to the principles of education. As an outstanding educator, I hereby declare that Monday, December 23rd is the time to celebrate Shayna Malone as Plainfield's Teacher of the Year. And the next item on the list would be three, present and discuss the first reading of the two ordinances, 143, ordinance, 144. It was supposed to be a modification of ordinance, 91 was still working on that. I don't think this is gonna make it in time for if we ever have a town meeting in the future. It's gonna be a little while to clean up all the language in there, but these are the first two that if you wouldn't mind, I cleaned them up since the last one you had. If you are concerned about any of these, let me know. I can speak with the, on an ordinance, number 143, some ordinance concerning hawking, peddling, soliciting, and vending. We'd like to get this moving forward. This is something that is, we need some clarification into what it is.
Because I'm worried about lemonade stands.
That would be something the chief can ask.
Why, why do you need this all of a sudden though? I mean, we haven't had it in the past.
We've got some issues recently and I think that they really need to be addressed properly. So if it's an ordinance, it makes it much easier to address.
So we're gonna charge someone two hundred dollars for a year?
For a year license.
For one year.
Again, this is a proposal.
Yeah, that's why I'm discussing it. And we're going to give a penalty for not following us. It's a hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Again, these are just numbers that are thrown in there. Do you have a chief to talk about that?
Are we gonna have the chief here to talk about this?
Sure, because this is the first reading. We need to highlight it.
Okay, so will we get the next time we read it?
If, if last time, then I'll get the chief first.
Alright. Because I'm concerned about Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and I know they don't have to go to door to door anymore. I get that. But lemonade stands, that type of thing. I don't want us to get into leasing of children.
That could be more defined.
Okay.
Second one would be posed as ordinance, 144 is open burn ordinance. Obviously, we've had some issues recently that we have a lot of people who are not understanding of the, of that kind of ordinance. And it's a burn issue. So this is why I'm trying to, the fire marshal brought this to my attention. He wants to know the, do an ordinance and this is what you put together.
Can we have it at the next second reading over? Also, where it says, I know this is the first reading, but where it says the town manager or the first selectman shall designate? I think that should take a fire question. It's very first page. Where it says permits and certificates?
They're getting copied from somewhere else.
Yep. No, that's what I'm saying. Because there's, we don't have a town manager. And I, I mean, the fire marshal would be better, better prepared to answer these questions and, and do that permit than the selectman who doesn't-
That's why the first selectman shall designate. It's like that couple of ordinances as well.
I'd like to have them both here so we can ask them specific-
I will ask.
Before we do the second meeting.
So I can ask both of you to be here for the next meeting.
Can you read these out loud?
If you can get into that.
If you want to say my question.
Want to? I really want to answer.
You, you, I didn't ask. Okay, and solicitor? The definition of solicitor? Is this gonna include like door damage on, or is- So that was my question on that. Are they solicitors?
No, I don't think they are. We're talking about the people who usually go around the town with the, I wanna show you a, uh, solar panels or things like that.
Soliciting sales, subscription, information business of any kind?
I mean, that might be put-
Business of any kind.
Right. And that might be put in an exemption for that.
And they do, and they do get paid when they go to the door. It's not, it's, yeah. That, well, that was my question on that. And then, and the burn one, under penalties, it's, need a little more clarity on what additional requirements or special conditions would be? They can set some, but not limited to, or something.
Sure.
What those additional requirements, special conditions would be? I have seen two questions out of that.
And again, each place in this thing where it says town manager, first selectman, I think it should say fire marshal because he has way more expertise in that type of thing than, than the first selectman or, you don't have the town manager.
That's the legislative law appoints.
Yeah. No, they appointed, but it's in more than one place here. Where it says the town manager, first selectman. The first part is where it should designate. But it's in a lot of places in here. And it's, you know, like I said, it should be the fire marshal.
Points are noted. We'll see if we can get both to be here for the next meeting for representation.
Alright, so do we read out what it says for the public or?
No, because we still have to modify.
Okay, so you're gonna modify and then that will be the first reading?
Alright, item four is Discuss an Act on Setting Appointment Dates for Municipal Agents for Elderly Persons of Penitent General Statute 7-127B. We have met on this before. We voted on someone, but we didn't set the date. It's either gonna be a two-year term or a four-year term.
So if someone voted in four years, it's a tough decision. You know what I mean? I say you take them as long as you can get. That's my view.
So our meeting that we had voted on, it was February 12th.
Do you want that to end? Sorry.
Yeah, I think it's starting at the end of the year before a four-year term. That's for the records. I'll have the town park to handle it.
I'll make a motion to set the appointment date for the municipal agent for, for the elderly persons for February 12th, 2024. It'd be a four-year term.
Tell seconded.
Twenty-eight.
Motion's made. It's on February 12th and then going for a four-year term. My R. Thank you seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, item five, Discuss an Act on Reallocation of ARCA Funding. So I put a little note in there for February, I'm sorry, November 13th, 2023, which was when we first voted to allocate the monies for two hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-five cents to ARCA to go to the town hall of grant repair. According to the way that ARCA works, you either have to have a contract or artists spent the money by the end of this fiscal year. Seeing as all we had to go out to rebid for the front walkway, make it ADA compliant, we're not contracted. So we'll be going out to bid probably in January and therefore we could lose that money. Instead of losing that money, what I would like to suggest is a reallocation of some of the monies. So you have to, again, either spend it or put it in a signed contract by the end of 2024. The current total is two hundred and ten thousand, eight twenty-four, forty-five. My suggestion is the following. I'm suggesting ten thousand dollars go to Atwood House Fire Department, ten thousand dollars to Central Village Fire Department, ten thousand dollars to Musa Fire Department, ten thousand dollars to Plainfield Fire Department, and ten thousand to American Legion Ambulance. The remainder of the money, which is a hundred and sixty thousand, eight twenty-four, forty-five, goes to WPCA for roof replacement project.
Is that the most better to be in your budget?
It's something we're contracting right now. They, they're working on doing roof replacement for one of their buildings, which has to be done.
They're gonna do the engineering and some like cost.
That's in your budget?
Yes, that's what ARCA's gonna cover and the actual data's gonna cover the budget.
So ARCA's gonna do the structural engineering part of it and then our budget's gonna cover the actual implementation?
It's, just the materials gonna cover the bit of cost of it, but not the engineering design and the whole budget.
We didn't have that in your budget at all?
I have enough to cover all, but I have still that much on past projects and more projects that I have on.
What did you budget in your budget for this whole project?
So capital included projects as well, three hundred thousand for the entire year to cover all capital included projects.
Generator replacements. We're on a different track. That was one of them. Generator replacements on another. Roof repairs, a third. I'm sure there's like two or three of them. Sold panel and glue, yep.
When does this gotta be actually voted by so we don't lose the ARCA funding right now? When does ARCA funding expire?
Again, you have to either spend it or be contracted by the end of this month.
So by December, so get going to twenty, twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
We're just thinking about this now.
Well, we were told that we cannot go into contract with anybody for the grant because we had to rebid. So it's gonna be realized at that point. We cannot, we're either gonna lose the money or utilize it for something else. And these are acceptable items which we can utilize it as well.
Are you contracted yet for this?
Just for the, for your last being, you have to engineer to do the design.
So will you be able to contract for the rest of it by the, before the end of the year?
No, I said, well, we had already approved them to do, to do a big set. That's the only thing that's getting approved with ARCA. The rest of it's gonna come out, I thought you had listed it.
So what if, what if we don't approve this and you've already, you've got the implementation part, but you don't have the, the study?
I was looking at my budget. I was not gonna have-
It's not, you're not something up down the road?
No, I'm not.
We've had a little more data. You know what I'm saying? A little more data is what we're talking about. That's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Not against it.
Is that, is that countering?
One sixty.
Yeah. So you see, I'm not against it. I'm just, I would like more information about it. And with only less than a week left in the, in the year? You know what I mean? There's a lot of other information saying you're trying to make the test move that one sixty. You'd rather be other than what you're saying to, that you have a lot of pockets you need to have there.
I'm just here for the WPA.
No, I didn't order me.
Is there public comment on this?
Nope.
Favor. The public's certainly not gonna lose the money.
No, I just wish we, I don't know what to point to. Wish we had more information than, yeah. It's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's two hundred and ten thousand, actually.
Listen, approved for that project last, last year. How much was it? That much? Our last meeting, you said we approved.
And you approved the fit, uh, fit sign for THA.
What's that?
I think it was like twenty-eight, about twenty-eight.
Okay. So that's in the works.
Right. And that would be contracted and this money would go into that contract. That's why it's already ready to go.
And what they do in design, could it go to bid?
So at least the process has started. It's probably gonna be over this or?
The actual work?
Yeah.
We don't know. What if a bid comes in and they're writing the specs for it right now?
So with the ARCA ones, they don't need to know?
Yeah.
And if our project doesn't come to two hundred and sixty?
Okay, we're gonna go back. It's only a hundred. Sixty, sixty goes back. At least definitely the money should have been spent.
I'll make a motion to reallocate the $210,000, $210,824.45 in ARCA funds, and approve it to go to, to WPCA, $160,824.45, and $10,000 for Plainfield Fire Company, $10,000 for the Musa Fire Company, $10,000 for Fort Regan Fire Company, $10,000 for Central Village Fire Company, and $10,000 for American Legions.
And I'll second it with great concern.
Any other discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have nothing on the other, for item H, which is a German.
Make a motion, move your hand.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go into our, shall we, PCA game?
We said American Legion, we said American Legion Ambulance. American Legions, a good question.
I did say that.
We have an adjourn, right?
No, we haven't.
Take a motion to modify.
I'll make a motion to modify. Item two, two.
I'll second it.
The American Legion Ambulance, instead of American Legions.
Second. Okay?
Yes, second.
Modified motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
He does say American. It's American Legion Ambulance, I didn't have any of that in my flow, so.
Time is now 7:55. I'd like to call this WPCA meeting to order for December 23rd. Full call.
All right, gagging.
Kevin Cunningham.
Gagging, boring.
Through the minutes, WPCA meeting dated November 23rd. It's wrong, it's 25th. Oh, no, isn't it 25th? Yeah.
Make a motion, there are three meetings, November 25th.
I'll second it.
All right, item D, public comment. Anybody here wish to speak on public comment? I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, public comment. Anybody wish to speak? We do have old business, and I'm going to ask if you wouldn't mind, motion to add to old business. Discuss an Act on the Request from Owner from 106 Palolo Ave to bypass the hookup for sewer.
So, only add, add two?
Yes, add two to old business.
Old business.
That was seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, sustain. Item one was Discuss an Act on the Bits for the Minisfoot HVAC System at the North Plain Electrical Room. We need to correct that. There is a bid that came in, which was a conflict of interest. So, we went back out to the other two bidders who were there. One is, if you take a look at the page, it discusses a couple of cross-sections to it. We went out to both of the other two companies and asked them to rebid with the Mitsubishi unit, and they did so. So, the first bid is now invalid, so we have to go and look at the other two. They did both, come up with numbers for the new Mitsubishi unit. And so, you have one bid from Corbett, which is a quote of $8,571.82. Hometown Heating was $8,869.91.
And there's no conflict of interest from the-
Or either of the other two.
Check that out.
Yep.
Make a motion now, except the bid from Corbett, ATRAC, for $8,571.82.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And this is a mistake on my part, because I had, one, that is the new business, but include it as old business as it is. Discuss an Act on the Request from the owner of 106 Palolo Ave to bypass the hookup on sewer. We wanted to have you here tonight to give us an quick overview of that. The request came in, so they can bypass sewer. Pros and cons to that would be, cost to the homeowner, because if they're looking to sell it, obviously, they'll look for a lower cost. Therefore, if they just do their own set, they can fix it, it's lower to them. If they have to pay for the sewer to do the hookup, it's a larger cost. And so, that's really what it comes down to, by line.
If I look at the board, the part that they decide, the cons of the town, and you're not going to get that financial, sewer, sewer used to be every single year, you fix, fix the subject, you're going to be on the subject for, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years, until, until fail next.
Right. My concern is if we let them not hook up to the set, the sewer with the ordinance or with the restrictions that we have, it's heavy. Here with an order, you have to hook up.
Yeah, since our ordinance is a property line.
Right.
And they have their property line, isn't it?
Yes, it is. And that's my concern.
And they should be required to hook up.
Thank you.
I told them, like, not make that incident, it's up to the board, if they want to request it to you guys, and that's how we're going to handle it.
I, I, I don't think, I think if everybody else has to hook up, I think they should have to hook up as well. I don't see any, any reason why they can't, why they shouldn't, why we wouldn't change that.
You're starting to make assumptions.
Exactly. Where does that live?
We're going to, we're all playing the same song.
Well, this eventually, yes. I don't think it's a good idea. I think they should have to hook up, just like everybody else does.
Are all the neighbors?
Yes. Most of the neighbors are closer to the sewer line than that. They're a little further back.
There aren't many of them.
Yeah, the other elements, like the first house that you're going down towards, so there's a cliff there, so the brothers will kind of rock, they're going to also really come and try and dig. So, the price would go up for them, too, and they'll find, they'll start digging the sewer line.
Because I know this isn't, they're not asking to redo the whole setup. The B2K is still good, it's just a tank of cell plate, a repair.
Yeah. And the letter came from a person who didn't hold, not the actual owner himself.
Get that, right? Last half.
Yep. Any other questions for? It's your pleasure.
I make a motion, we deny the request.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That was the other item that we should have had on number one, so there is, we already talked about the roof replacement before. There is no other. Entain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hit block. Thank you.